It is six o'clock and I'm going to call to order the Town of Trophy Club work session agenda for the Town Council, and we are all here. Hello, everyone. I hope you've all had a great vacation with your children, and we know that Mr. Wright has, correct?
That is correct. Yep.
This is March the 24th, six o'clock, and we are here to actually just have a workshop. And before we get started, do we have any public comments, Tammy?
No, ma'am.
No public comments. So in that situation, what I will do is, before we actually go into the agenda item, I want to share a happy time with you. And I had the opportunity, as did all the rest of us, to open our mailbox on Friday. And this beautiful picture of family, I looked at it and I said, I know that smile. Do you guys remember this? So Stacy and Jeff and I had the opportunity to appoint Hernan to our Art and Culture Board. And so I just thought it was so fun to open it, look at the picture, say, oh, how fun is that? And besides that, he's a neighbor of Jeff's. So that's what I love the Trophy Club magazine for. It does highlight families in the town and gives us an opportunity to know more about who we are. The, in order to, I'd like to make a few comments before we open up to the agenda item, which is only one. This is a workshop. And so I'm going to ask the question, why this particular workshop? And it really comes to us over a couple of the last two or three months, each one of the council members up here, I believe, have encountered individual conversations or inquiries amongst the residents concerning the town and the MUD governing relationship. And the council, in listening to this, I heard it, I heard other people, and I said, you know what? Let's consider doing a public meeting. The best way to present the same information, so all of us are presenting the same information from which we can move forward. So for the last 40 years, the town and the MUD have provided the water services and the fire and EMS services. And the bottom line, the average resident, if I go out and talk to the people down the street, up the street, everywhere, they don't care how the MUD and the town work together. They really don't care. What do they want? They want their water to turn on, and they want to feel like they're protected and safe. However, there are people who do want to know, and so individually, this council has collaborated with Brandon Wright, our town manager, to create this workshop presentation. Each one of us has had input, shaped it, put it together, and the Town Management Council wished to have the most cooperative working relationship with the MUD. And in the end, the winner is the Trophy Club resident. So often, a workshop such as this would be held in an executive session, and it is our desire for this town and for the residents and for the MUD directors to know the town's interests and wants as we plan for the future, working together to deliver the very best water service and the very best fire services and EMS. So with that in mind, I would like to open up the agenda item. Tammy, would you like to read that? And then Brandon will present his presentation concerning this issue.
Item one, presentation and discussion regarding the Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One, District Boundary Expansion and Governmental Services Transfer Initiative and Related Impacts to Interlocal Agreements Between the Town and the District.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight's workshop agenda item, as Tammy just read, is really related to the ongoing efforts that the town has had to expand the district boundaries. This is the MUD district that we're talking about, as well as kind of the reallocation of governmental services. So we're going to cover a lot of topics tonight. I kind of apologize in advance, my presentation is a little lengthy for that, but it is to make sure that we kind of provide a good amount of background information, both for the council but also for the community at large. This is a topic that is fairly complicated. Most people don't quite understand how it is that the town and the district work together collaboratively to be able to bring about the services of fire provision as well as water and sewer to the community. So this is kind of meant to be a little bit of an educational session as well.
And before you do that, I just wanted to also say that I think as you go through your presentation, there might be, somebody wants to get something clarified, so please feel free to ask for clarification, but at the end, we will have some opportunity to discuss as well.
Yeah, please, you know, ask for clarification if you have any points that you would like to make as well to help clarify. You know, the council understands this topic very, very well on that, so if I, you know, say something that's not quite clear, feel free to step in and help with that point here as we go through, as well as kind of just general discussion points, too. So if I'm talking the entire time, it's going to get a little boring, so I invite you all to go ahead and jump in whenever you want.
No problem. I think we can manage that. Thanks, though.
No, no, I do not want to link this to you. This council believes in short meetings. I will keep my mouth shut.
Well, here's your clock, right there. It's 6:06.
Exactly. All right, let's start off with the idea of cooperation.
Here you go.
You know, so first of all, as the mayor kind of opened up with, the town and the district, and I'll refer to the MUD as the district throughout the presentation today, but the districts have worked collaboratively over many, many years, really kind of with two primary service levels, both the fire service and then the water and sewer service as well. And the reason why we've had to really make this work as two governmental bodies has been that over time, if you'll take a look at this slide here, you'll see on the left, there's an image of kind of a yellow, and then there's some pink on that. And that was the district boundaries prior to the current year, so 2024 and prior, that's what their boundaries looked like. And it was the yellow area. The pink area was not included within their area. However, if I'm a resident of Trophy Club, you know, all of us use the same water and sewer service provider, right? That's the district. All of us have the same Trophy Club Fire Department that responds to both of those areas, as if it's one seamless area on it. And that has worked because of the collaboration between both the district and the town over many, many years, to make it seem as if this entire system here works collaboratively together, just one system working it, not quite understanding that behind the scenes there's actually two different entities working together to make that part happen and fund that element for our community. The 2025, the boundaries were changed. We'll talk about that more. That's the map on the right, but kind of the 2024 and prior, you can kind of see where it was that the pink and the yellow areas needed to work together. All right, so what does that look like? Well, first of all, in the area of the water and sewer services, okay? The district operates all of the water and tenancy sewer services in Trophy Club, okay? And the district owns and operates all of the water and sewer infrastructure in that kind of that original district boundary map that I was showing, so that original yellow area, right? That's all the MUD district area where they have infrastructure as well as service provisions. And then in that pink area that was up there just a little bit before, the town actually has a public water system up there, and then the district operates our public water system by way of an interlocal agreement, also known as an ILA for that. So that is how we've kind of worked together. So the town has an area up in the PID that was created, the public water system was created when the PID was being developed, and that was there to help service the residents that were coming into that area, right? But it was outside of the boundaries of the MUD and the district at that time. So the town has a system, right? The district has a system, but it all seems like it works together as one because it was built that way, right? It was built to work together as one collaborative system, and the district operates that entire system for us. They establish all the water rates, the district being, they establish all the water rates within the town system, and they collect and retain all of the revenue that come in for that entire system. And the town doesn't receive any revenue for the water system, all that is collected by and retained by the district for the good of the water system and the sewer system. All right, let's take a look at the fire side of it. Okay, on the fire side, the town operates all of the fire and emergency medical services, EMS services, and Trophy Club. But we do this through collaboration with the district. The district actually funds fire services and owns fire assets, things like the fire station, a couple of fire trucks, and the town funds the EMS side of that. So we have the emergency medical services, and we own the assets like the ambulances and other kind of fire EMS administration vehicles. Just as very similar to the water side of it, there is an interlocal agreement, an ILA that's in place, to help, you know, provide for how it is that this area is funded and everything works together. The interlocal agreement, the high-level concept, is that the district pays for the fire services and that the town pays for the EMS services. That's at a very, very high level. We'll get some more details later on as we talk about it, but if we talk about the intent of the ILA, it's that those fire protection services are funded through the district and then the EMS funds and the portion through the town. The town collects our funding through property taxes, so we have part of our property tax will pay for the EMS service that's provided to Trophy Club residents. And on the district side of that, they support fire services through a district property tax, as well as we work together to bring about the PID assessment for EMS or for fire services as well within the PID area. Okay, and I bring that up as kind of a reference right now because, starting next fiscal year, right, that won't be there anymore because of the expansion of the MUD boundaries. However, previously, that's how we've done it, right? Both through a district property tax as well as a PID assessment in the PID area for that. So it hasn't gotten complicated yet, right? That's kind of how that part is funded on it. So, but again, to our residents, they, you know, they may understand some of those details, but for the most part, they see one, you know, they see the town operating the fire side of it, and they see the district providing the water and the sewer side of that to our customers. That's the intent of our interlocal agreements, is to try and make it seem as if all of that happens seamlessly through one agency. All right, so again, kind of going back on this idea of kind of the complication of what I just described, right? So that's a lot of moving parts, and all of that kind of working together to really behind the scenes administratively make it seem as if they are both ones, you know, two different systems, but they are systems for that. In April of last year, so about a year ago, right, the joint ad hoc group of both district members and council members got together with the goal of seeing, is there a potential for expanding the district's boundaries with the goal of kind of reallocating water and sewer services and fire services and Trophy Club residents? In other words, taking some of this complication away and making it more streamlined for how it is that the water and sewer services work and how it is that the fire services work, right?
Just a question. This is just a, also, what triggered the idea of beginning to look to enlarge the boundaries? Because there was a trigger, i.e. the four gas stations, correct?
Yeah, that's true, yeah. So the initial, the initial concept came from when we were looking at the well sites. So we were taking a look at the, so even further complicating this, right? Within the PID area, you have a couple of old well sites that have now been redeveloped into residential sites.
That were not originally the PID.
But they were not part of the PID.
Now they're in the middle of the PID.
Right, and so you had, you had now sections of Trophy Club that were not in the district, were not in the PID, but were still within Trophy Club, right? And again, because we had structured all of the financing mechanisms to be by way of either the district or the PID, it left those well site locations as being without a home, right? There was no way to allocate fire services to those particular residents on that. And so as we developed scenarios of how to deal with that, one of them was, well, let's take a look at expanding the boundaries, right? By doing that, we kind of take out this complication of, is it in district, out of district, in PID, out of PID, that part, but just trying to make it so that the district's boundaries would encompass all of Trophy Club within that expansion. At the end of that, right, as we talked initially about our, some of our goals, right, our goals were that the public water system that the town has would become the ownership and full control of the district. In other words, there wouldn't be a public water system anymore, there would just be the district's water system. And that fire service of the town would assume ownership and the district's fire services' funding obligation is part of that as well, right? That all of that would be taken over by the town within that effort. So we met in April, and we actually then kind of worked several meetings, but we developed a legal framework that was set up to try and accomplish these goals over a series of months and even maybe years, right? At the time, we didn't quite know how long that process would take, but we knew that the first step that needed to happen really was the boundary expansion, so that's what we started with first. And in October of 2024, the town and the district approved resolutions that consented to the boundary expansions for the district on that, as well as the intent to reallocate the governmental services of water, sewer, and fire protection at that time. All right, so there's two different resolutions that were approved, right? Town council approved theirs, the district board approved theirs in that process. And then October through December of that year, and remember, if you go back to that council meeting, you'll, some of you may have asked me, how long do we think that could take, right? And I think my answer at the time was, it could take up to two years on that, because we weren't quite sure how long it would take the TCEQ, who regulates the area of MUD boundaries, district boundaries on that, how long it would take to receive that approval. What we learned in the process was that there really was no, within the law, right, within state law and TCEQ regulations, there really was not a process for what we were experiencing here, where we had a district boundary expanding entirely within the corporate boundaries of another municipality. And then, so all it really took was the consent of the governing bodies, which had already been given on that, meaning we could go ahead and proceed without any additional TCEQ approvals. However, we did work with them in the process, right? We worked with the Tax Assessor's Office in Denton County, as well as the Central Appraisal District, to ensure that we understood exactly how this process would be viewed from their vantage point when they received the necessary documents in their offices, and they needed to approve those in order to make sure that this happened correctly. So we did that October through December of that year with the, kind of receiving all the necessary procedural sign-offs that we needed in late December. So December 20th, 2024, the expansion request was filed with Denton County, the clerk's office there, and we received approval for it. So the Central Appraisal District did confirm that the expansion was effective on January 1, 2025.
So that has a meaning for those residents in the PID twofold, because currently, for this year, we're getting assessed, which is non-tax deductible. That changes now, it can be written off your taxes. And the other thing that comes into play is, is because of the boundary expansion, we're now fall within the MUD boundaries, so any of those residents that wish to participate in the municipal government of the MUD have the ability to do so, where previously they did not.
Yep, yep, you're exactly right, yeah. So those are really the two biggest wins from this project, right? The thing that, on it right now, with the boundary expansion part complete, is that now all Trophy Club residents, right, have part in the process of the matters and election process, even running for board seats, right, there at the district on it. Essentially, that's more involvement in decisions related to things like fees, right, tax rates, water quality improvement projects, all of those things that was directly impacting them before, but they didn't necessarily have a voice in that matter at the district board because they were with, outside of the boundaries of the district board. And then that property tax part of it, right, because it was an assessment before going to a tax on it, makes it now something that you can deduct from your federal taxes as you file on those. Those are two great wins. And the third one really is also this idea, it's a fair property tax system for all of our residents. You know, no longer do we have this idea of, if I live in one part of the town, my tax bill looks a little bit different than it does if I'm in another part, and it's by way of assessment, and there's an extra surcharge on my utility bill every month, and it just now, it's more streamlined, right? There's a simple property tax process that happens where you can kind of directly see, whether I live in the Highlands or I live over, you know, on the other side of the community, on the east side, I'm going to now have the same structure to my property tax bill.
Yeah, I want to comment on that, too, because just from my perspective, having lived here, lived here for 20 years, it was a massive mistake to have the circumstances exist to create a situation where you had this whole third of the community that couldn't figure out where their services were coming from, how are they paying for it? You have an ad valorem thing that you're paying for, but it's not a tax, but it is a tax, we just can't call it that legally. I'm here to tell everyone, I'm not an attorney, I don't give legal advice. It was a tax. You know, it's like, we're finally leave level playing field now. I mean, the level of complication, you guys, all of the MUD directors, everybody that's served in any capacity has experienced this difficulty in trying to help people navigate how and why. And so just having this alone, to me, is a massive win, and everybody involved should be real happy that we got it done, and I wish, I wish we'd have done it sooner.
Yeah, so at the end of my page, I have a big, big word that says, "first step."
Yeah, congratulations.
So it's great. It was a great step.
Pop a bottle.
And I know that Dean helped do that and helped facilitate that, I know the directors did, so everything, everybody's involved in making a great step forward.
All right. Before anyone gets too excited about the idea that assessments within the PID area have gone away, right? There are two different PID assessments there, and this is just a point of clarification now for it. So there is, there was a, and this is, actually, you'll see on the screen here, I happen to live within the PID area, right, so I just grabbed my own home and the way that my taxes look on the Denton County Taxes, Central Appraisal District website for this. And if I take my 2024 tax info and take a look at the list of taxes that you have there, the second one down on the left, right, Trophy Club PID Number One Emergency Service, that was the assessment that was happening for the fire service provision, right? That was the joint agreement that we had for the ILA that allowed for that to happen. If I go all the way to the bottom of that, right, the Trophy Club PID One, that's the infrastructure bonds that are paid by way of assessment on everyone's, on their bills as well, their property tax bills as well, okay? The top one, that EST Two one, that's the one that will be essentially going away, right, going to a zero value. It won't necessarily disappear in year one, but it will go to a zero value. The one down below, the PID Four one, that one will continue, and that's the one that we just actually met a couple of weeks ago with the town council to approve the idea of refunding those bonds, right, on that part. So we haven't done it yet, we still have to get through that process, but those initial infrastructure bonds have nothing to do with the allocation that's being done here for fire service, okay? So that's a completely different topic, but they're both PID assessments.
And to confirm, that goes away in 2032.
2032.
It was 33 or 32. It's 32.
Maybe you haven't sold the bonds yet.
Was it 32?
But we haven't sold the bonds.
Maybe you haven't sold, all right, which bonds are you talking about? The MUD bonds or the PID bonds?
We're talking about the PID bonds.
PID bonds, okay.
Yeah, so the PID bonds.
It was 32.
And that's to be determined by the sale of the bonds. That hasn't been determined yet.
We'll say 32 with a little asterisk next to it that says, look back to the previous meeting if you want accurate information.
No, I mean, Kevin was, Kevin was raised his hand.
He was thinking, "MUD," maybe.
Well, we'll have some, we will have more discussion on that in a future conversation.
And just a note about those infrastructure bonds, because I know, and folks that are wonder about this from time to time when I talk to people in the community, probably won't hear this meeting, but, and I'm sure this is another point of complication that we've had to clarify at times, which is that, you know, traditionally, and certainly throughout the rest of Trophy Club, that would be something that is funded by a developer. In this particular case, Trophy Club became the first municipally bonded PID in the state of Texas to provide for master infrastructure ahead of the development. All this meant is that a different person borrowed the money. It is essentially, it is, it's still something that would have gone in as a part of a development and been handed over to the municipality at the time that the development was completed. Some folks kind of have an idea, you know, my, my infrastructure is on my property taxes, aren't these our streets? Can't we put a gate up here? There's still a lot of misconception, so, you know, we, we basically borrowed money on so Merdod wouldn't have to. And if you want to know why, Google Merdod and Kyle Bass.
All right, well, there is a function.
He was a developer.
If I may. There is a function to the PID, and the reason it, you got rid of the MUD and went to the PID was it allowed the bond money to pay for things that the MUD couldn't pay for, whether it be parks, whether it be extra land, whether it be more landscaping. The town at that time made, not that I agree with it, but that made a decision to use the PID because they get several million dollars of additional money for the town that they couldn't have gotten otherwise.
But to your point, the developer...
That normally, that normally in many places is part of the lot price that the developer pays, but the town politically wanted the developer to develop this property and went ahead and cooperated with them.
Yeah.
But there was a reason for the PID. Thank you.
So, so I want to kind of highlight on this page, this idea that Trophy Club residents who live in the PID area will still continue to have their infrastructure bond PID assessment on their bills on that part, so that will continue going into the future until the end of that term for it. And so here, you know, if you kind of follow the arrows here a little bit, right, the Trophy Club PID Number One Emergency Service, that's the assessment for fire services, that's going to be replaced with the district tax, okay? So now, if you kind of follow that red arrow down there, my 2025 tax info includes Trophy Club MUD Number One. You wouldn't have seen that before, right? It wasn't in 2024, it's now in 2025, and we'll have the same assessment as any other property in Trophy Club that has always had the Trophy Club MUD One tax category on their bills.
Could I make a comment that it might be good to plan ahead for Jill to be aware that people are going to ask what's going on?
Sure, yep.
That we, when the tax bills go out, that we can be prepared of communication?
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, so that's my, that's my one and only PID clarification slide on that. If people have any questions, certainly please refer to our website. Feel free to contact staff if you have any questions about your tax bills on it.
Ask a professional.
Or ask a professional, exactly. All right, so we've talked about boundary expansion, right? That process is now complete and successful in what it's been able to achieve for it. There were two remaining steps, right? The water sewer service reallocation and the fire service reallocation on that. So after that process, the town reached out to the district and provided kind of a schedule and a process for us to begin moving forward with the reallocation of services as originally outlined in our resolutions for that. That process is important because it needs to be timed up with the budget process, as well as the, when it is that you actually set your tax rates for the year as well. If you, if you do it, you know, there's only, there's a window every year where you're working on those things. If it's not done within that window, then you kind of have to wait until the next year to be, to be able to kind of get that window open again, where you're setting up the idea of tax rates being established correctly, as well as budgets being set up to anticipate the acceptance of a particular service into those areas. In response to that, the district, with the idea of moving forward with reallocation part of it, the district approved a motion at their January 15, 2025 meeting, requesting that the town put a non-binding referendum on the May 2025 ballot to determine Trophy Club resident's support for the concept for that. And so the town took that very seriously, the town council took that very seriously, and researched that ability. First of all, understanding that we couldn't do a non-binding referendum, that there are some state laws around, you know, what, the way that referendums are structured for that. Anything ordered by the council needs to be binding on that, meaning that there's not a, you can't just ask the question and then not do the results, right? You have to follow through with whatever that result is, because that's what the residents have, have stated, as their will by way of the voting process. So we, so a referendum submitted by the town council must be binding, and also the town determined that the May ballot question does not align with that annual budget process, right? Putting it that late in the process really allowed us this year, would require us to miss the window for being able to accomplish that process. So we sent back a response on February 3rd, provided a response to the district agreeing to the request for an election, but clarifying the idea that it must be binding. You know, with that idea that a binding election would need to be submitted for both governmental entities, in essence, the town cannot ask a question on its ballot that binds the other governmental entity to action, right? And same way for the other way, right? If they have something on their ballot that is something that we have to do, it needs to be on our ballot on that part. And so, in fact, it would require coordinated ballot questions to be able to both transfer and accept those services, okay?
Would there be, what's the reason for having a non-binding election? I can understand a binding, but what's the reason for having a non-binding?
I think, I think the intent is to understand what people wanted to do, maybe, without the idea of being bound to whatever the decision was, kind of more, maybe of all, say it more as like a survey instrument possibly, to understand what the, what the desire was to move one way or the other. So, but all that, I'm, to be honest with you, all that's just kind of hypothetical. I'm not quite sure.
Thank you.
Okay. And in response to that, right, so also, we did request that the election be held in November to better align with that budget process. So if we have that answer in November, then we can begin all the documentation for things that need to be set up to align with the budget process. In response to that, the district did approve a motion at its February 19th district board meeting to decline the town's request for binding elections at that part. So that process kind of stopped at that point, right? Because at that point, we don't really have a mechanism forward without binding elections to be able to move forward if we are going to send the item out to ballot, not that it's required, but if we were to do that stuff. All right, so what are our next steps, right? Well, we know, we know that the town cannot do anything to force one entity or the district or any other entity to transfer services, right? So with the board holding that authority to finalize the transfers, at this point, there really have been no actions taken as of today for that. So the town just remains ready and willing to complete... ready and willing to complete the transfer of assets as we initially contemplated within those, those expansion resolutions for when the district is ready and prepared to, to proceed. So, you know, it kind of, I, I think it goes into this mode of it kind of just, kind of put it on a shelf and wait until the moment becomes right, when the district board is ready to be able to do those things. At that point, we're ready to move forward and to get those things done. I think it's very much still the will of the council that the, that the town complete those transfers, get those things done on that, to be able to kind of complete the initial design that we had set up originally, where we were contemplating not only boundary expansion, but also reallocation of services overall, because those would be providing the biggest wins for our Trophy Club residents.
Okay, so before you go for it.
Yeah, please.
So the bottom line at this, at this place where we're at, next steps is no further action unless initiated by the mud, the mud directors.
Correct, yeah. I, I don't, I don't see any other way forward. The, the town's kind of exhausted all of its process right now, right, and kind of is waiting for just at that point, from the, the district board, to be able to move forward with the remaining steps to complete the transfers.
Okay, so we've closed that off?
Yeah, yeah, so, but, but again, as soon as they're ready, we are ready indeed to continue moving forward to complete those transfers on that part.
Thank you.
All right, with that though, right, comes, so if you'll remember back to last year's budget process, and as I understand, for, for, actually for several years, the town has been contemplating this idea that the, that the fire service would be coming over to the town at some point, right? We've been planning on that, and as a result, kind of we've made certain decisions, we've, we've kind of orchestrated the ILA a certain way because we were anticipating this idea that the town would be taking over that service sooner rather than later in, in the process on it. And so if we're not transferring the fire service over to the town, it does leave some long-term stability concerns as it relates to the fire, fire ILA in question on that. And so I want to highlight those, those three, and then we'll hit on number four as well. So the first three items are related to that, and the fourth one is a little bit different, but we'll touch on those. The first one is, is kind of a lack of fire capital equipment replacement program. The second topic is a use of fire tax reserves budgeted for annual fire operational costs, and the third one is a joint alignment needed on fire department staffing levels. Okay, so we're going to hit on those three, and then we'll talk about the fourth item after that. But before I get too deep into fire ILA, the interlocal agreement language, there are a couple of provisions that just need to be generally understood about how they operate within this document, okay? First of all, in the funding obligations section of the ILA that we have with the district, okay, it simply says that the district pays for fifty percent of all the budgeted costs of personnel, right, because we share fire and EMS personnel. All of our staff there are firefighters, they're all trained to be firefighters and paramedics, they do both of those things for it, okay? So we, so the fifty percent of the cost is to the district, the town has the remaining fifty percent of the cost related to the personnel. The district is responsible for district incurred debt by way of the agreement. And then the district, it says this, "District shall fund one hundred percent of budgeted and amended budgeted costs and budgeted costs of services and supplies associated with fire protection services." Okay, and fire protection services is defined as being kind of what you would normally associate with a fire protection service without the EMS stuff involved, okay? So responding to fires, things like that, right, all of that types of service. Then says that the town shall pay for all of the town imposed expenditures associated with the fire protection services that are not part of the approved budget. So if there are items that are not included in the approved budget, right, and we spend money on those as part of the fire protection services part of it, those would become our responsibilities by way of the agreement. The intent of our budget is to agree upon, right, what are the fire protection service costs, and then ideally, the town doesn't make any changes to that beyond the, the budgeted process. All right, in the, so that's, that's in the funding obligations part of it. So essentially, remember, personnel is split fifty-fifty, right, district paying half and the town paying half. Fire protection services are paid for, so if it's anything else related to fire protection services, that's going to be district responsibility. If there's anything in there that is EMS-related, that's town, that's town responsibility. It's not actually called for by way of the agreement, but it just kind of leaves that topic out, right? So the EMS services are the town's responsibility under that agreement for it. So if we go into the, the payment obligations now, it says, if you read with me kind of just a little bit here, it's the intent of the district that the sole source of revenues for payment of district's funding obligations be the district's fire tax. Okay, so going back to that, the property tax we were just talking about a few minutes ago, right, the one that shows up on your bill, that's the one that is providing for the fire, the, the fire services.
What's the property tax?
It's that property tax.
And the assessment.
And then the assessment is in addition to that to replace the tax in the areas where the mud boundaries are not, right?
The triple secret property tax that we can't call tax.
Yeah, yeah.
So there we go.
It says, "However, in the event that fire tax received by district is insufficient to pay district's funding obligations, under this agreement, district may use other available funding sources," right, "but under no circumstance shall district be obligated to pay an amount to town during a fiscal year that exceeds the maximum annual payment amount or the amount that the budget was set for," okay, on that. So, so if kind of go one by one, right, it's the intent that the funding source for, from, from the district for fire services be the district tax, right? "In the event that it's insufficient to pay for that amount," right, "whatever that tax amount is, the district can use other available funding sources to pay for that," right? However, they're never required to pay more than the maximum annual payment amount or the amount that's in the budget, okay? So you'll notice that maximum annual payment amount is capitalized. That usually means in a contract of some sort that it has a definition somewhere. So if we go to that definition, here's what maximum annual payment amount is. And if you'll read with me on that second sentence where it starts with, it's on line three, it starts with the word "the," "The maximum annual payment amount shall be the amount of revenues available to district from the levy of a fire tax without triggering the voter approval tax rate." So you'll remember the voter approval tax rate, right, the VAR rate on that. That is something that we all deal with as governmental entities. Essentially, it is whatever you collected last year in property tax revenues plus three and a half percent, that's the cap of the voter approval rate, okay? Meaning if you ever go higher than that, voters have to approve that tax rate increase, okay? So taxes can only go up, the amount of tax collected can only go up by three and a half percent. So this is essentially saying, right, the maximum amount owed to us is that voter approval rate, dollar amount collected from the fire tax on the district side of it.
And one of the reasons why it's important that this is worded like it is, that that voter approval tax rate is cited there is because in the budget process, we have to get out ahead of it prior to both entities approving their budget, and so you can't fund something contingent upon an election that has to happen. So it's, you kind of have to make it work under that, under that ceiling, basically.
Dennis, you had something?
Okay, let's talk about the word fire tax. Is that a defined term?
It is, not, in the agreement, it is not, no.
Here's my thinking. The town collects a property tax, one number, one dollar, and in the budget, there is line item for fire. And you could theoretically work up how much per cents per house that is, per tax. When you, but there's no fire tax in the town. So come over, help you understand what the mud side of it is. When I see a mud bill, I see one, transparency, Kevin. The, I see one number for tax, okay? It's six, point zero six two five.
Yep.
Do they have to define where that goes, or is that one number, and then, just like the town, they have a budget over here that has a line item on how much? Help me out here, because you're using the word fire reserve, you're using the word fire tax. Is that a defined term?
So part of your question there is, is it would be internal to the district organization of knowing how they allocate that funding of the fire tax, right? You are correct in what you're saying, which is that, yeah, the words fire tax do not show up on the fire, on the, on the property tax bill. You'll see it as, as the mud tax, right, on that part of it. And within that amount, there's, the, the, the large majority of that number is being allocated to fire services. A smaller percentage is being allocated, I think, for just kind of some general administrative things, but it's a very small amount of that part.
So in the mud, and I got this off the mud website, the mud has a fire tax rate maintenance operations of, of two twenty twenty-four, point oh five one three six. Is that a line item budget, or is that something that the mud said, all right, that's the amount of money that tax is going to go to fire?
The second part there, yes. They said that's the amount that's going to go to
So the mud defined the, the sense of their tax rate to go to a fire. That's how you get to a fire tax rate.
Yes. None of that is, none of that is specu, is specified within the agreement itself, though.
No, I understand.
But I'll say, yeah, that's how we arrive at it in practice.
What I'm trying to do is understand it from the mud side, because they've got some reasonings for why they do things, and, and they, as a governmental agency, have the right to do it. I just want to understand how and what their reasoning is and what, where they're coming from. So that number is determined ahead of time, and you get the fire rate, the fire tax rate first, and then whatever number, whatever amount of money out is, that's how much they've got, which comes into this maximum annual payment.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'll come back to it later.
All right. Any other questions on kind of those three points, which was, we talked about the funding obligations, right, just the way that the funding costs are split, fifty-fifty on personnel, fire protection services are districts, right, EMS is towns. Then we talked about the intent is to pay this from the fire tax, what Dennis was just alluding to there, right, was the intent is to pay it from fire tax, right? However, in the event that that's not sufficient, they can use other available funding sources as, but they're never required to pay more than the voter approval rate amount on the tax, right? So that, that's the way that part of it is structured, as we kind of move into the understanding now of.
But, but the voter approval rate is based on the total tax rate, not the fire tax. In other words, per law, per the law of whatever that voter approval, the, the state law on voter approval doesn't address a fire tax, they address the property tax.
That is correct, yes.
And they dress, did, and that specifically goes to the M and O side, not the INS side.
Correct, yep, yeah, to the.
So this fire tax on, talking to the mud is dealing basically with the M and O side of that portion, okay?
I guess it's sort of saying, if you had no interest in sinking and you only spent money on fire, the absolute maximum would be that number, right? In the contract.
Accordingly, that, that rate has always, has changed every year since twenty twenty-one. Is that a, because they sat there and they said, well, this is, they, they made a governmental decision, this is how we'll divide it up, or does that have to do with the maximum tax, the, the annual, the voter, voter approval tax?
I think the rate is determined based on the needs of what the amount of money they're going to need to collect, that dollar amount, then, and Kevin could probably clarify more, but then that backs into a tax rate. You don't do the tax rate first, you know, you have to determine exactly what that amount is.
But that, not according to this. According to this, the tax rate's set first, and then you figure out how much money it is, and that's what it's going to be. So it has nothing, the way of reading this.
I'm not reading.
Now, the voter approval rate, the voter approval rate gives you the three and a half percent increase maximum, and then that's, that, just like Steve was saying, right, that, that is then translated directly into a tax rate that will get you that amount of money. In the district's standpoint, it's actually as an average per house, a little bit different from the way ours is structured, right? So it says, "On the average per house can go up three and a half percent, and this is the tax rate that would then equal that amount."
That's right. And according to the way I read your, your presentation on page twenty, that their sole source of revenues is the district fire tax, which is set first, then they figure out how much money they're going to get, that tells how much they can pay to the fire. So it's, I, I guess I'm being very convoluted on this, but it comes later on down the road trying to understand where the mud's making their decisions or not making their decisions on. And in the ILA, the way I read it is the fire tax is set individually by the mud every year, and then that tells you how much money they're going to have. And then they can go to our meeting and say, here, there's your fifty percent, that's as much as we're going to do.
But that, that still starts with the anticipated amount they think they're going to collect in taxes. It starts there, and then it goes to rate, a determined rate. Like that, that's the, that's a chronological step.
It's repetitive, right?
It has nothing to do with the budget yet. It has nothing to do with being presented with a budget and say, you owe fifty percent of that. That's the way I'm looking at it.
Because of the limit of the three and a half percent, yes.
That's correct, and because of the way the ILA is written.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, correct, you're, you're right on that. Yeah, you, you can, budgetarily, you could have whatever number you want in there, the ability to pay for it is a different thing, right, on that one, and there's a, there's a limit on the amount that can be paid on, on that.
I'm sorry, it's a technicality, but it's going to come later on.
Yes, it will, thank you.
So now with that, with that kind of education on the ILA component of this, let's talk about some of the collaboration needs, right? First of all, was this idea of, it's a lack of capital and equipment replacement program, and this is particularly on the fire side, okay, for this. So in our twenty twenty-five budget, for example, we identified some needs, right, equipment needs and then fire station needs, and those were things like mobile radios, thermal imager, plumbing repair, HVAC units, dumpster enclosures, all right, all of those things had anticipated amounts to them within that budget. Because everything right now in the district side of it is capped within that M and O rate, three and a half percent part of this, the, the, there's a, a funding shortfall, and we'll kind of get to that part, being paid from reserves, and as a result, there isn't enough money to put into that and capital items that's within the voter approval rate tax rate that we've all just talked about here, okay? As a result, right, you see the capital replacement and capital expenses budgets are at zero dollars for the year, meaning that we can't buy the mobile radios or the thermal imager or, or those things without going to the district and asking for them to do a budget amendment to be able to pay for those things on their side, and if they don't want to, we could always do it on our side, but then the town has to pick up the bill for that, okay, because of the way that the agreement is structured. Kind of, you know, think of it like this, right, unlike on a town's budget, there really is no additional funding mechanism that we have in place by way of the ILA to be able to address these capital projects outside of their operational budgeted line items and their M and O rate, part of that. And that's, that's not a real consistent environment that will allow for us to be able to replace things before they fall apart and are broken or so bad that we just have to get something in there for that. We'd like to try and be ahead of that, especially when it comes to things like fire protection services, right? We want to make sure that those things are being addressed on an ongoing basis and being repaired and, and taken care of as we go along.
So let me make sure I'm understanding what you're saying. So if we, let's just make it simple. If we need this and we don't have the money, but we, and we go to the district and we ask them to help, then that's how we get the money.
Correct.
Because we do not have the fund for it.
Are they required to pay it?
Correct.
Well, that's then.
They're not required to approve.
No, they're not. No, no, they're not.
So then the fire department goes without.
That is correct.
Yeah, that's, that'd be correct.
So a lack of resources because of a lack of funding.
That's correct. That, that's what I wanted to hear.
And there's a lack of resources now, that triples down to our residents.
Correct.
Of what we're saying.
Of course.
That is not okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to clarify that.
That's based on the way the ILA is written.
That is correct.
Because the mud directors, not that they would, I'm not putting words in their mouth, but they have the ability to take money from elsewhere in their budget and put it into the fire, into, paying their whatever.
They can, yes.
Okay, but they don't have to because the way the ILA is written.
That is correct.
It, it says it both ways. It says they have the ability to do that in one part of the ILA, and in the other, another part, it says they're not obligated to do that.
So, so here's, and this is getting a little in the weeds, but we're talking about it now, because I've been thinking about this in similar terms, so I'll bring it up, which is, in an ideal world, you would have, and I think this is what you're describing here with this, with this slide, this is, you have a capital, you have a responsibility for the assets, which was in the prior part of the ILA that we reviewed, right? Fire assets, not personnel, solely funded by the mud district, but there's not a programmed capital replacement program the way that we typically handle things here, and we would prefer to see that because it helps you anticipate future. My question would be, if it, if the number required to fund it, let's, imagine there was a capital replacement program, and imagine it was administered under the exact same practices that the town uses for the town's capital. And imagine it was administered under the exact same practices that the town uses for the town's capital assets.
And you're talking about in the, in the district.
With the MUD, yes. Just imagine that it was apples, apples, both sides, administered the same way, and it's just two different, you know, two different sets of folks doing it. But it's the same concepts, the same numbers are going in and out, the same decisions are more or less being made.
Correct.
At the end of the day, if that amount that needs to be funded in a given budget year exceeds the voter approval rate, you've still got an issue. And let's face it, we could, we could face that too. Hopefully, we never will, but it could happen one day for one reason or another that we're out of sync and we need to go to the voters. It's much easier for the city to go to the voters and say, this is a tax rate increase, and this has to do with public safety, whereas the MUD district people may not even be aware of their role in it. So for me, that's a risk that we need to think about. But at the end of the day, if the MUD district has a tax base and they have funding from that tax base, and we agree that we want to utilize the funding from that tax base, our go-forward solution should be, figure out what that funding mechanism needs to be, determine that, and then every budget year, we collaborate on what we need to, cut the check for whatever the number is, and we fund what we need to fund. I mean, I know that's kind of thinking a few steps ahead. There's a whole lot of things to go through before we get to that point. But that's just kind of how I'm looking at it at this point, is like, the MUD has, the MUD has a tax base, the MUD has the ability to provide funding for some of this as well. So whatever that number can be that's committed to in a way that we can collaborate, then I don't care if it's fifty percent. We're going to, we need to make sure we're taking care of our needs. I'm not hung up on fifty fifty per se. I'm hung up on just make sure we're using all the dollars available as, as best we can, no matter how big the pot is on one side or the other.
Well, the problem now is we are dealing with potential shortfalls. This slide shows it, and what are we going to do about that? That's the discussion right now, like.
Well, the potential shortfalls falls as presented here are, the fact is, we haven't, we haven't just asked the MUD. We haven't presented a budget to the MUD to say, here, this is what we want to do. Do you want to pay it? And this is something that they would, the capital replacement would fall under services and, and whatever, and they're paying a hundred percent of it. So the question is, where they get their money only comes into play in the ILA because of the way it's worded with the fire reserve. Other than that, I don't know what the MUD budget is. I don't know if they have money they can shift around to pay it. It's a matter of the way it's worded in the ILA that comes into here. And this is like throwing, I don't want to say throwing stones at the MUD by saying they don't have this. It hasn't been agreed to it because it hasn't been presented to it yet? Because we haven't presented a budget yet?
Well, certainly, we've, we've talked about, we've talked about these projects with them, right? On that part. And we, we have a CIP that we present on that part of it. The, the gap between where we are, where they are, and I, and I agree, no, no one's here to throw stones, right?
No, and I, I don't mean that.
It's to try and talk about.
I never say the right thing anyway.
Yeah, what, what are the issues that we don't have a solution for right now? We don't have a solution for how it is we pay for ongoing capital equipment needs in a way that is structured over time, very much like a capital improvement program.
Exactly.
For the town. We don't have a similar version of it that we've agreed to with the district that provides guaranteed, you know, dollars for replacing these items in future years. It really becomes a year-to-year concept.
This is something that, hey, right now, there's no money in there yet because we haven't, we haven't talked to them about it and agreed to how to do it yet. And therefore, and then put it in the ILA.
Correct.
To where we all understand it.
Well, and I think this is a good opportunity to, and I'll talk about this later in different contexts, but I think this is a good opportunity to reset, to a certain degree, the operation of how we go about figuring out how these things are funded. And this conversation really points that out in a good way, I think, because we're saying, well, it's a risk because it's, it's two different sets of folks trying to figure out how to fund one set of services, but two different aspects of that service. And what I would really like to, I mean, as, as the town, as the municipality, health and general welfare is our responsibility. So my goal, my thinking on that is, if there's something that can't happen, it's not, oh, somebody over in the other building made a mistake. It's more just, well, we didn't get the agreement right, we didn't get the operations right to figure out how to hammer it out. So my recommendation would, would be to think of these things in terms of kind of resetting, okay, we understand, like I said earlier, the MUD has, they have the ability to tax, they have a tax base. What's their ultimate desire for using that to help fund fire? And kind of build the parameters around that. Now, again, that's a more higher level thing, we've got more things to talk about, but that's how I'm approaching it, is nail down, what's the goal? What's the desire to leverage that tax base to help fund fire and go from there?
Well, I think that's a good outcome of this kind of discussion, is to begin writing our list of to-dos. Two-dos regarding this, because we are, we do have a scheduled meeting with the MUD in, in June on the ILA. So these are steps that maybe need to be dealt with before we get there. And so did you write that down, Tammy?
Can I?
Thanks.
Address what the function of the January, the June eighteenth meeting is? Did redo the ILA or to agree on a budget? Or what are we talking about at, on that meeting? It's a joint.
Yeah, certainly, certainly the, the, a basic function that needs to be dealt with there is the budget, right? We, we have to, we have to get that part done. We have the opportunity, because we're with them, to talk about the fire ILA as well.
That's a secondary, but that's a secondary issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right.
But the fire ILA needs amendment because of the clauses in there that state the town is going to collect the assessment and provide that to the, the MUD. There's, that's no longer necessary.
The, where my mind's at is the June eighteenth meeting to discuss the MUD budget with them is too late, is probably immaterial. The other is to present the budget on June first and then expect it to be approved by June thirtieth is too short. My mind's on next year. My mind's on sitting with the MUD before we start the budget and agreeing on levels of service, levels of capital improvement, and then create the budget from that meeting. Now, I'm not saying there's got to be set in bronze at that meeting, but that should be held in Ju-, in January or someplace. So my mind, next year. How to do this better because it's too late now.
I agree, yeah.
And also, and I'm, I'm including what you said, redoing the ILA, okay?
So, so June may be, and again, I don't have a goal, I don't have a specific goal for the ILA this year other than just to ensure that the budget process goes smoothly from a legal perspective. I don't necessarily think structural changes are going to happen between now and middle of the summer, when it would matter, to your point. Now, as far as the budget meeting, June eighteenth is, is a little late. But the original intent of the, of the first version of this ILA in twenty sixteen was that there would be a collaborative budget meeting specifically to main, to manage through the, the costs that are shared, the intent being fifty fifty. I don't, I was around for the first three or four, five of those that we had. I was sad to find out we stopped having them. I think having those is a big part of how this is supposed to work. It's my intention that we have those in collaborative fashion. But I don't remember if we had them earlier than June in the past. I know in those years, they were, that, that the staffs worked together with input from both bodies to get to something that can be hammered out in one meeting fairly easily. So I would like to see us try. We have three months, two months and three weeks, but I mean, I think it's, hopefully, it's doable.
You mentioned staffs, you're talking about the MUD and the town staffs working together. Is that happening now? As the fire department's creating the budget?
Yes, but, but remember that the, the way that the ILA is written, it's, it is written that there's a cap on the district's side. And essentially, the fire department and the town prepare the budget. And then we, then we work with the district once we find out the funding constraints, right? And then we try to right-size everything to make it the, the best that it is. So I, I don't want to overstate the amount of collaboration that goes on right now.
Sure, no, it's very, yeah, it's, it's tactical.
Correct, exactly, with that part. However, we do, we do go back and forth several times over what those numbers are, how that's working, what numbers need to be inputted where, how we collaborate on the different agreements that need to be done.
Yeah, my, yeah, my, yeah, my intention in mentioning that was in the, in the, I guess, at least three times that I participated in one of those. Steve had to be for one, Kevin had to be there for one or two. We were never far from where we needed to get when we had that meeting. It was usually a good hour-long discussion and we were done.
So in summary, I see two different scenarios. First, this is a short term, which Roland is speaking of. You're looking at a long term. A long term would help to keep us going forward. We wouldn't have to do this, these short terms would be much easier if we had a long-term plan. Would that be right?
It, it is, and let me, let me kind of go on to the next topic here, and, and maybe the next one. Because I think, that's what, what I think I'm, I'm hearing on this one is this idea of, this is something that we, that we need to start addressing. Doing it before this next budget process is probably not a realistic outcome of that. And we need to continue working throughout the year to be able to bring that to, to a state that works for everyone. But that may be different on the different topics that we have here. So let me kind of go topic by topic and kind of make sure that we're kind of in the right category for each one.
Right, okay. But basically, where my mind's at is, the MUD has the ability to take money from elsewhere and put it into the fire department. The question is, it's not written that way right now. But if they were part of the collaboration in creating the budget, whether it be personnel, whether it be capital equipment or whatever, then that gives, then when you come to the June submission of a fire budget, then they're ready for it. And they know that they're, yes, no, whatever, they're going to. And I'm making this something that they have the ability to reallocate their funds to do this. So if, and they would, I think they would readily do it if they were participating and knew it was coming up. Okay, I'm sorry, keep going.
Yep. All right, let me go on to, to, to long-term issue number two, right? Which is that the, as we talked about before, right? There's a maximum amount of voter approval rate on the amount that the district contributes to the fire protection services on that. As it's outlined in the ILA, right? The current cost of delivering the fire protection services exceeds the amount of that voter approval rate tax amount that is collected on it. In the current year, the amount anticipated to be spent from reserves was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars or so for it. So as a result, what that means, that the district kind of relies on those fire tax reserves every year to help pay for that part of it. Now, there may be years where that's not needed because we might have staffing shortages during the year, right? So it's a fluctuating number, right? So you have to always assume every dollar in the budget gets spent. And as you know, having sat over several budgets and then, you know, in the accounting process, not every dollar always gets spent, right, on that part. So I would anticipate that number to be smaller than a hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred, right? But it, it's probably not zero at the end of the day. Yeah, so what does that mean, right? Well, what it means, if we take a look at the way that the ILA is written, right? Is that there, there needs to be some clarity in the intent on the district's side to make sure that those fire protection services, if there comes a point at which the fire tax reserves are depleted prior to the end of the term, right? Is the district intent to continue funding that from some other funding sources Dennis was kind of alluding to there, right? From other, some other funding source? Or is there, are we going to arrive in that year and then find out that on the town's side, we now have a budget structural problem because we are two hundred thousand dollars short, three hundred thousand dollars short, whatever that number might be in that year, from being able to fund fully that program in that year? What we don't want is, as you've all mentioned, right? This happens fairly late in the process, it's June. If we find out in June, we have a several hundred thousand dollar shortfall on something, that's a lot harder to deal with in that moment than it would be to know a couple of years in advance as we kind of make preparations for how it is that we fund these things and we move from year to year for it. Looking at their mount, that the fire, that the fire tax had in reserves, as of the end of, of their last fiscal year, September thirtieth, that number was a little over six hundred thousand dollars. That's a little higher than I was expecting it to be. That's good news for us. I was expecting it to be a little bit, a little bit tighter than that for it. That, I'm not exactly sure of the reasoning why. There's probably some questions that we need to talk with their staff about, about how they might be, you know. I know last year, we slowed up the payments that are happening, so now they only pay us twice a year as opposed to paying us every month on it. And that may have been a reason why those numbers grew a little bit more than I was expecting them to for it. But either way, higher numbers are good numbers, right, on that. We always like to see more reserves. Those reserves mean that those fire protection services can be paid in their entirety for a longer period of time. The question is, will they make it to the end of the current term of the current, of the current term on the agreement that we have with them? Or will it deplete before then? And if it does, right, are we, are we going to have other funding sources from the district that help to make up that shortfall? Or will the district be looking at the town to be able to make up that budgeted shortfall in that year? So those are really the, the, the kind of those two issues that are formulated from that particular point on it. Going back to the kind of the way we've been talking about, you know, whether that's a this budget process problem or whether it's a future budget problem, I would put this one more in the category of it's a future budget problem. Right? Certainly not a, it's got to be resolved this budget process. For it, I think they have enough in reserves to be able to demonstrate, at least right now, that things are going to be okay for that part. However, you know, it's, it's on that, things that probably need to be talked about before too long.
Yeah.
It's still optional whether they're going to use it or not.
What'd you say?
By way of the agreement, that is correct.
It's optional.
Yes.
Whether or not they'll use it.
Yep. Yeah, so the question really becomes, you know, within the ILA, right? What are the other funding sources? And are, is there a ways to contractually commit them to using those sources when they're, when they're shortfall? And that kind of leads us into number three, right? Which is the joint alignment needed on the fire department staffing levels component of this. Okay, so because there was this intent that the fire services were coming over to the town at some point, the town really got ahead of the district when it came to what the staffing levels are at the fire department. And what I mean by that is that we were on our side making decisions related to staffing levels and staffing pay and things like that, and we did. And there's all great reasons why we did all those things, right? But remember the collaborative nature of how it all, that this all works, it really, you know, was never agreed upon by the district that we were taking those actions at that time for it, which is, I think, why you see the ILA structured in the way that it's structured today is kind of more for that reason, more than anything else on it. So if we're going to be in this, and that was, in the, in the short-term world, that wasn't going to be a problem because, well, if the town was going to assume it anyway, right? Then it was just going to be our issue to deal with when we had the fire services moving forward for that. In a more prolonged version of the fire services being a collaboration between the district and the town, then it probably means we need to go back to making sure that our staffing levels are something that both agencies actually agree upon for being the appropriate level of staffing with a commitment to fund that staffing level for it. This is one I see as being more of a this budget problem.
Yeah.
Than a long budget, budget problem, long-term budget problem on that. It's one that we want to begin working with them sooner rather than later to make sure that this, that this staffing level part makes sense in, in our budget process. And it's not something that just, it continues to kind of be a source of contention between the organizations for how it is that we are not in alignment over what the proper level of staffing is in the organization.
So this then would be a key June discussion item?
I think, I think that would be a correct statement.
Yeah. And so just to, just for clarity's sake, Brandon, this kind of comes down to the number of firefighters per shift number, correct?
It does, yes, huh? Yep, yep, yeah. But it would be everything, right? We'd take a look at all.
Sure, of course, but we are currently at, operating right now.
There are five, so there's a total of eighteen.
So how many per shift right now? What's the per shift number?
Five per shift, eighteen total, right? Eighteen is the number? Yeah, eighteen total, five per shift.
So five per shift? Okay, so.
And then, sorry, and then one shift has six.
Gotcha. So, yeah, I mean, you know, I spent a lot of time in this seat, then I spent a lot of time away from it. Then I spent, and I promised myself when I came back, I wasn't going to, I wasn't going to mince words. This is politics. It comes down to politics. I've been around long enough to remember when we went from three to four per shift and we were told that was going to be enough for the projected growth and population of trophy club, which hasn't changed. Then we went beyond that. And so I can understand why there would be people that had a problem with that. And we should not, the town should not have made a decision that had the likelihood of being controversial. It's controversial enough that there was disagreement at the dais at the time. They shouldn't have done that while they were under an ILA with another body to mutually agree upon these things. So I think we made a mistake here, and I think we need to come back to agreement on this one.
So that's a to-do, one of our short-term to-dos.
I agree.
Is, is the current, all right, right now, we have a budget that was approved and fifty fifty split. Is the current budget under consideration going to change that staffing level?
Not quite sure what the question is, sorry.
In other words, we're already under an agreement, they paid their fifty, we paid our fifty. Everybody's acknowledged what it is on the staffing level. You're creating a budget right now. So is the staffing level changing in that budget?
Not until we have that meeting in June.
Are we going to request more?
Not, not, not until, not until we have, we have some level of agreement between the organizations on that.
All right, so you, but it's not. All right, so you, but it's not, like you're adding-
You're not recommending.
You're not recommending adding to anybody.
But going back a couple of years, wasn't it a one, weren't we gonna add one, one individual per shift? It was gonna be a total of three?
Correct, yeah, we added after one.
And we've added just one?
Correct.
That was predicated on a grant.
Correct.
To fund those.
And we did not receive that grant.
We did not receive that grant.
But to Dennis's point, it was discussed and probably agreed upon a couple of years ago, or at least a year ago, that it was gonna be three additional people over time, grant, or, you know, with the understanding that we would get a grant. Grant didn't happen, so it gets back to where are we today going into next year.
Correct.
So, my question is, we currently have staffing of 18. The budget that's being created right now, does that consider changing that 18?
It does not, currently, no.
So, any changes would be based on salary increases or personnel or benefits increases that portion?
Yeah, the, the normal escalation of costs, yes.
That was basically your question.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Questions, anybody?
No, I would just say, the, the, the number one goal on that is to get full alignment from both us and the district on what that number needs to be.
However, if we simply transferred the assets, then the town would have that ability to control the budget, tax accordingly, because the tax lib, or tax ability would come from the MUD to the town. The assets of the PID would go to the MUD, which is their forte. And then, instead of having two entities going back and forth on how to run the fire department, we would have one entity taking care of it.
I agree. That's also been made abundantly clear that that's not where we're at today. And-
That is the initiative of the MUD directors.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, I would agree with that, with you on the philosophy that one entity has to have. The MUD can have it too.
Well, they could have both of them.
We, we, they have the ability to take everything now and let, so if the philosophy is one entity handles everything, then the question is, which can, which this, the MUD or the town can do it better? And we haven't, we haven't considered what the MUD reasoning is yet. That has not come into this conversation tonight, as to why they would wanna do one way or the other. And they have, they have their reasons for making their decisions, we have our reasons for making ours. But it can go both ways, or go either way.
So, we'll say, one of the big driving factors to the handoff of operations to the town, including, and the primary reason being personnel in 2016 under the original version of this ILA, was to make sure that staff could be under TMRS, as opposed to the county and district equivalent. That was cited by multiple fire chiefs over time as an important factor. I don't have any desire to, I worked pretty hard on that 2016 ILA, so I think if we, it was predicated along, people getting along. And so, that's why my first goal is to figure out how to get along, reset the, reset the relationship a little bit, and then, then see what, where we can go from there.
All right, the fourth is kind of really just more of a, of an update on a, something that was mentioned at this March 17th meeting there for the district board meeting, which is just, and this comes back to the idea of the governmental services being transferred and reallocated, right, within this process. Was that, they did have a board member who kind of stated that they, that, that, kind of the, the statement was that the ownership of the town's public water system really had already transferred to the district by way of the boundary expansion part of that. I think it would be, you know, the position of all of us that, no, those agreements have not been entered into at this point for, for moving forward. And really, I think what we're looking for with the district is really a structured process for transferring ownership of, you know, the district, to the district in a manner that benefits, obviously, both parties, as well as all of our residents as well. There's a lot to think through there, right, on that part of it. We have the outstanding, the outstanding infrastructure bonds that are part of this, this component of it. We have the dissolution of the town's public water system that has to be appropriately dissolved, handed over to some other entity, right? There's all of that process that has to happen with all that. There is, there are lots of formal actions, I believe, that need to be taken both by our board, our council, as well as their board, in this, in order to make that part happen. And, and then, in that process, obviously, then, kind of these joint coordinated conversations with the TCQ to dissolve that public water system. It needs to be kind of a, a part of that, that, that solution of really reallocating the, the public water system there to the, the district. So, just kind of what, it's, it's important, I think, that, I don't know, I, I'm not sure the current state of it, right? But what I sense is that there's maybe not a, a alignment between maybe the town's understanding of where we are in the process right now and the district's understanding of where we are in the process right now for that. And if you're ever trying to get something moved forward, the first way to wreck it all up is to have you not understand where you are in the current situation, right? And, and to do that, so I think it's important that we all have some discussions and coordination around where are we-
Yeah.
-with this, so that we can begin to move forward in a way that makes sense on this, and the way that actually achieves the goals that we've achieved, that we set out for everyone.
Is the MUD attorney and our town attorney in agreement on what's going on, or is, is there a differential of opinion?
I think there's just a lack, I think there's just a lack of communication right now, if I had to explain it the right, the right way.
Oh, question about this. So, I take this one as something that can be handled in parallel to everything else. It can almost be decoupled from the rest of the discussion tonight. And the reason why I think that is because as long as the Trophy Club MUD exists, we have no business being in the water system business. It's not our system, it's their system, it's just paperwork. It gets back to what I said 30 minutes ago. It was a mistake that it ever happened in the first place. So, my recommendation would be that we take some separate action, based on your all's recommendation on how to make it very clear what the process should be. Let's tie this up. To me, this is process, legal maneuvering, paperwork, state. We figure it out, and it's off the table, because there's, you know, we serve no purpose here, other than, like I said, clerical maintenance of something that, that the MUD operates. So, this is, uh, this one is one that I think should hopefully, might take a while to unwind, but hopefully it won't take a while to come to alignment on.
And I think tonight opens up the discussion, so that we are speaking to everyone. We have a former MUD director, we have the director of MUD here. They're hearing us speak, hearing us talk. And I really go back to what was said at the very beginning, the council, we're ready. What, if the step is to remain where we are, get a good ILA, get a good process in place, so that we have a future planning around capital improvement and so forth, so that it makes it easy for us both. And are you transfer assets? And are one or the other takes the whole enchilada? And I don't know that one wants to really do that, but that's an option. But I just wanna make it really clear that, right now, this council is in alignment and agreement to work with the MUD based on their initiative and their ask. Because we, we're ready. We're ready to make the transfer of assets, we're ready to work on the ILA. We need just some open communication, so that we know what the district directors are thinking. Because it's really hard to get any collaboration when we don't know. Is that fair? I hope it is.
Thinking of the water system infrastructure, is there any financial or money involved between the, the transfer of infrastructure?
So, yeah, all, all of those are items that have to be kind of finalized in this agreement. I, I think it is not, it's, it is in no one's interest, and certainly not the interest of our residents, right, that either entity, for whether we're transferring fire or sewer services, or fire services to each other, and the assets and everything like that, that there would be any money exchanged, because that just places further payments that have to be made by our residents.
I'm not into fire yet. I'm strictly into the water system infrastructure. That, that, is there any money involved, or is this strictly between two lawyers to draw up the right paperwork? Or is it a dollar, dollar and good consideration, and there it is, you have it?
Yeah, we're governmental entities, we can make the transfer for a dollar and good faithful consideration.
Is there any money involved, or anything to the ca, to the town in that? Besides your legal fee? Besides the legal fees, I mean, are we giving up any debt, are we giving up any?
Coordinating with the TCQ, getting the right paperwork together, there might be some surveying, might have to dig up some ASBILs, just to get all the records straight for whatever the TCQ requires.
But that's, that's legal fees. It's not like we're, we're assuming any debt, or, nor is the MUD assuming any, any money, financial. So, this is, I understand where a MUD, a, a, a MUD director may think this, this way, but at the same time, it'd be nice to get it all resolved legally, and if it's strictly between the two lawyers, I don't see an issue. Not that I like paying your fees, but.
Well, not only that, we're in a situation now with the MUD boundaries being expanded, we are they, and they are we.
Right.
And kind of always have been, just in weird ways.
I'm thinking strictly of the water infrastructure, get, make sure that that all just gets very clear, because that's the way we're thinking.
Well, and I'm glad you brought it up in that, in that way, Dennis, because we, we call these things, and we do it all over, everything we do, every budget. We talk about assets. In, in some worlds, in the world of accounting, in the world of business, an asset is something that appreciates. These are not assets, they're liabilities, and we're trying to recover the cost that is required to operate those financial liabilities to provide services. This isn't for profit, these things don't appreciate. I would, I would, we can't change the language that the entire governmental system in Texas uses, so we're gonna keep calling them assets. But in my business, if there's something that exists that doesn't make you money, you call it an artifact, it's a thing. So, they are things, they're, just because we call them assets, doesn't mean that they're moneymakers. So, that sounds like it would be a pretty easy move.
And where I'm coming from, based on what you just said, is, if I'm on the MUD side, am I assuming a bunch of money? Meaning, I'm gonna have to add a couple million dollars worth of, just because I took out, took this over? Is that, is, that's what I meant by, is there a financial consideration on either the MUD or the town that, that needs to be considered in this? Or is it strictly paperwork?
No, there, there will be the value of assets, that, that would then become theirs on that part of it, correct, yeah.
Any maintenance money that's gonna be in addition to them?
Not beyond what they currently-
Not beyond what they currently, so therefore, from the MUD side, it's strictly a paperwork-type deal. And from the town side, it's strictly a paperwork-type. That's what I'm trying to get to.
There's no transfer of debt.
That's right, and I don't care if it's a million dollars worth of, of assets or whatever. I'm talking about, there's no financial loss to the town, no loss to the MUD, no gain, no gain. That's why, it's all equal. That's why I was, I'm asking that question, that that's the way it is. Thank you.
Other comments? I, this is just a curio, I mean, I know that at one point in time, over the last couple of months, there was some enthusiastic kind of interest about transferring assets, fire, water. And then we went for a non-binding election, but we don't, I don't know why the MUD said no. It's, and I would love to know why the directors said, don't wanna pursue this. Because it is a reasonable way to govern Trophy Club for the good of the resident. And it also is a way to get away from this coordination stuff that gets in the way. And I'll just say my little, oh, my story, and that is, about four months, three months ago, we saw the Palisades burn down, and the thing that was missing, not, not one, don't get me wrong, but a, a factor was, are we, this town, fully prepared to meet an emergency disaster at the worst? And if that can be answered yes, the way we're organized, then let's keep on going. If it cannot be answered yes, we need to do something about it. Because each one of us up here are elected, and each one of the board directors, MUD directors, are elected officials. And our first number-one reason and obligation is to protect the citizens. And all I'm asking is, are we doing the very, very best as two governing bodies in this one town to protect our citizens? And if we're not, can we do something that, it's not difficult? But the customer gains, and each one of us are elected by those customers, we're responsible to them. That's my little message, and I just really believe, I just heard us battering back and forth, trying to work together, work together, work together, just to get an agreement on staff. Really? And, and you go back, excuse me, and the money, you, really? Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, go to the next one, and then, because you're, you're one step ahead, I think, of, of Brandon, because his next thing is to workshop, relate to what we need to do, is we're, this is the ILA. And then you're ahead in transferring the fire department as a whole. If I heard you correctly.
Well, I could be. Or it's, or it's an option, it's an option to get us in Trophy Club, serving our customer the very best, most efficient way we can, and to be ready.
And I'm not disagreeing with you.
And that's, that's all it is.
On what we're talking about, right now at the ILA, and then the next conversation is the fire department as a whole.
But that, but just, and you're right, Dennis, you're absolutely right, but that second conversation is not a new conversation. Okay, we've been trying to have that for a while, so whether we get there or not, if we, if we don't, then let's move aside.
I'm trying to get there faster by getting through, through this.
Yeah, well, and that, and that's true too, and, and I'm just saying that the transfer of assets just seem like a easy kind of way, because the whole thing is so complex, but it was an easy kind of way to get to where I'm saying to be the best prepared we can be as a town. And five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, maybe the whole thing comes together, I don't know.
Anytime you simplify government, the, the residents win.
Exactly. Thank you. There it is. Why don't you speak up? That's exactly right.
All right, so the, so this kind of comes down, now, what I wanna do is be able to kind of at least clearly, you know, clearly communicate with the district some of the things that we would like to discuss at the upcoming budget meeting, as it relates to the ILA component of this, right? You know, so, things like, and, and so I, and I, and I'll recap what I think we've kind of discussed and, and reached a conclusion here on. The first item related to the capital funding of equipment and facility needs, right, that that really is something that we want to discuss. We need to address some short-term needs, but also, we need to, we would like to work long-term on the development of, really, kind of a, a six-year capital improvement plan that matches kind of the town's, uh, planning process for how it is that those things are funded over time, to be able to address those, those replacement needs. Okay, any issues there with that?
I would, in that conversation, you know, I would compare it in a way to what we try to do with street and water infrastructure replacement in a way. It's criti, it's critical for us to figure this out. I don't care how we figure it out.
I agree.
But we need to have some kind of plan. And again, if the plan is that we modify the ILA to operate differently, to make it easier to plan, that's fine too. I, that's why I think one of, uh, one of the things I wanna learn over time, and, you know, these may require conversations that just take place between people, is to really understand, you know, the district's desire to utilize the funding they have available towards fire. What are their expressed goals and desires for that? Because the numbers are such that, as you've proven, that it gets us most of the way there for most of the stuff. So, we just need to have a plan, and I mean, to me, that's really all it boils down to. So, I, I, I think that's important to cover.
Yeah, and that's related to the second item, right, which is, one and two kind of go along with each other very, very much, right? It's this idea of the other, other available funding sources, right? Are there any commitments to provide that through the term of the ILA, to make sure that the town isn't faced with a budget shortfall at some point due to that, that they, they're no, no longer being reserves available to pay for that? And then the third item is, obviously, agreeing on fire staffing levels, which I, I think is more of a, we need to kind of get to that part sooner rather than later, and deal with it probably this budget process.
The, the current ILA expires when?
2028, September 30th.
Is there anything that says that the MUD has to talk to us about changing it?
No. No, it-
So, this, this is just a cooperative type- So this, this is just a cooperative type, we have some issues we'd like to talk to you about. They're not required.
It rolls over every year.
Yeah, there's a, there's a, it has to.
That's what I'm trying to get.
Yeah, it rolls over automatically unless either party terminates.
So that's, that's what I was trying to get to. We don't have to wait till the twenty-eighth to, you can use the word renegotiate, work together to get this a little bit mutually more beneficial on the town side, is which we're talking about.
Okay.
Questions, anybody?
Can we, can we go to the fire department now?
I don't know.
I would just say, again, I would just say the most important thing is to identify common goals. Identify the common goals, understanding that the means to achieve those goals are, are different on the part of each body because of the differences in the way they collect revenue and operate. So, common goals, two sets of mechanisms for raising funding, and then how do we make that work? And, you know, other than that, you know, the, the staffing question's gonna be key for the budget, so let's make sure we're, have plenty of time to work through that, and that's all I have.
And I would also add to that, I would, I would invite everyone to open up and share information. Because if we don't know what others are thinking, we make it up, and it makes it more difficult. So I'm, you know, I'm just saying, we have mud director here. Open up a, a workshop so that we can hear what you're thinking, what you want, so that we can be ready to respond and not guess. And, um, we've been working together for a long, long time, and we all need each other. There's, that's just the bottom line. So, any other comments?
On the fire department? As far as assuming it, cuz I've already stated that I think that only one entity should have it. Whether it be the town, whether it be the mud, I think it's just best for everybody if just one entity has it. I don't think that the mud's reasoning about this has been really understood by the town council or the town residents, or maybe even the mud. In that, and I, I'm gonna use this philosophy right now. When you're in the salesman and you're being taught to sell, and you use what they call the Ben Franklin Close, you make a list of all the different things, one side or the other, as to why you would wanna do something. And the rhinoceros in the room is Westlake when you talk about the fire department. Okay, and that's, and how that's understood, the, the understanding of that relationship to the mud and why they're resisting, has, has not really, I don't think, been publicly talked about. It really, you know, really opened. So, I hear it, I don't understand it. I hear different numbers, two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand, growing, whatever, twenty twenty-three or twenty thirty-two, whatever. There's all sorts of stuff. I'd like to have a, some really good understanding from the mud side. I'm not saying I agree with them, I just wanna know why they're, what their total thinking is.
And that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and I, I.
Is it raining out?
Must be something in the hallway.
I'm, uh, I'm glad you mentioned that, Dennis. Cuz it's, it's been a big, that question has been a big player in how we navigate these things for many years. And there was, there was a time where that question was itself turned into a political football. There were, you know, a couple of years before I got on council, the first time around, people were trying to say that the money was just gonna disappear. Well, that was almost fifteen years ago, the money's still here. I would like for us to find ultimately, my ultimate goal as someone who's trying to help with the direction of what we're doing here, but also somebody who's lived here for a long time and hopefully will still for much longer, I would like for us to find a simple way to modify the ILA in a longer-term fashion that basically says, here is what we can afford, here's what we can do. If there's money from Westlake, it's found money, we'll use it for as long as it's there. But we've gotta, we've gotta find a way to accept taking advantage of it if it's there and be ready for it to not be there whenever that is. There's enough numbers and spreadsheets in the room that we can figure that out and get some graphs and get some bar charts and people can figure that out. And then I would like to see the ILA simply be described in terms that facilitate the funding from the mud's tax base and the most smooth operation of the fire department simultaneously.
Okay, so you want that, you want some disclosure, I want just some open communication.
I want simplification.
And you want simplification.
We don't have to sit through more meetings to, to, to hash that out on who's gonna pay this fifty percent if we just transfer the assets.
And I don't think it's, right now, no one's convinced me that it's financially responsible to transfer the assets to the town.
Now, are you talking about all, are you talking about?
I'm talking about, it simplifies the entire thing, although it does let the Westlake revenue, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, it's about two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars?
Three hundred fifty.
And growing, and that's the part, it's growing.
However, however, there's a caveat to that. Steve talks all the time about talking to his neighbor and explaining it to his neighbor. Well, now, let's explain it to our neighbor over in Westlake. And say, well, guess what? We don't, we have, have the ability and the willingness to apply fire protection to you. And we are, we're obligated to, but you're not using it. And they're not using it because of the way Westlake had to incorporate and provide their fire protection to it. So basically, what we're saying is, is you're gonna give us an excess of three hundred thousand dollars a year for nothing. Thank you very much.
That is, thank you.
Okay?
But that's not right.
I didn't say it's right, but that's legal.
Okay, let's, let's, let's close it down.
And we don't understand it.
We don't.
And we don't understand, and it's been, I'd like to see some data on the growth of Westlake in what the next couple of years, where it's up to three hundred and fifty now, it's gonna get better, it's gonna be more. And in order for me to make a decision in the town, I have to know what my, my, and I don't wanna use the word competitor, at the other side, which is the mud. What's their reasoning? And that helps me get, make a better decision for the town and for the, for the residents. As of right now, I'm not ready to look any taxpayer from, in Trophy Club, in the eye and say, the town can absorb three hundred fifty thousand. Because if I do, that tells me that I'm over-budgeting three hundred fifty thousand today.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I agree with that, Dennis. I would just say, and this is, you know, we're an hour and a half in, this is another three-day discussion. It's a complicated issue, right? Yes, yes, it is three, X today, and a little bit more, and a little bit more. But at some point in time, it's going to happen. And what are the ramifications at that point? So, I, I just wanna be clear that this is, if it was simple, we would've figured this out a long time ago. We've, we've, we've had all these brain cells being burnt for forty years and hadn't figured it out. So.
One parting shot.
But it's, it's, it's complicated.
Just, just one parting shot, and that is that you're, great thoughts all the way across the board. Time and time again, when the question of, should we take advantage of the Westlake revenue? When that has come up in an election, time and time again, every voter in Trophy Club, be it a town or mud election, has said, yes, take the money. So I'm telling y'all, and I'm telling everyone who's listening, I'm listening to the voters on that one. And I will, until the money's gone, cuz they've made it abundantly clear for as long as I've lived here, which is twenty years.
Okay, before we, I wanna clarify one thing. When you said combine, you're, you're talking about combining water and town together? Or were you talking about separating the assets, fire?
Talking about transfer responsibility and the tax to the town for the fire department. And transfer the fire station and all the assets.
Everything fire. That's what I'm saying, so you'd have two, the town running, uh, town.
Town runs the fire service entirely.
Because I thought you might have been saying the other, okay. All right, I am, any, any final word, any final question? It's seven thirty-nine, I turn.
Wham.
I'm leaving my pen here, Tammy.
I am too, I am collecting pens.